For Wednesday, May 8, 2019. And we'll do work session discussion meeting minutes.
I have no corrections.
Department head report. See a few. Does anyone have anything to report?
Oh, nobody else want? We've got a copy of our bylaws for the ad preservation program. We're going to make a change on the back page in addition to it, so.
When's your next voting meeting then?
We won't vote on this. Probably June.
Okay.
I've showed it to the board, but I haven't made it official yet because I had our solicitor, Mr. Rackley, looked it over the other day and we made a couple of changes, so you're seeing it.
So what's in red is what's been changed or proposed to be changed?
Yeah, that's an addition to what was there.
Did you say Attorney Rackley has reviewed it or he's reviewing it now?
No, he reviewed it and made corrections.
Okay.
That's the final version.
Okay.
Why are you making the change?
We had it in our guidelines and they sure somebody questioned the way we made a move at the beginning of the year, but starting another form. And one of the questions I asked Mr. Rackley was, as I said, it's in the guidelines. He says, is your bylaw listed now? He said, you might want to add it into the bylaws and make it a little more efficient.
Okay.
So that's why we're making the correction.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other department head? Tim?
A couple of things here too, for the director of recreation tourism. As of Thursday, I had a candidate for the pool manager's job. As of Monday morning at 9:00 AM, he withdrew. So I meet this afternoon with my assistant candidate and I don't have a decision as to whether or not we'll move forward. We have 13 guards, five which we've yet to certify, which will be getting certified by the middle of this month, and 10 of the 13 will be first year guards. So, you know, the concerns I have in regards to opening that pool, needing the leadership there is going to be one of the concerns that I'll bring to you as to where we move forward. We did put our promotions out, believing we were moving forward, but we may have to reassess that situation at this time. ICE report meeting is Thursday for tourism. A lot of articles going on, but got some good feedback in regards to the tourism week that's going on right now. Met with the treasurer's office and the auditor yesterday, and they'll be putting a letter together for you guys to see which I would think will be going out here. We're going to negotiate this. We'll strike the office in June. So that report, we'll discuss further. The advisory board meeting tomorrow. And then we received a phone call regarding an arena, a horse arena, and regards to people potentially coming forward to talk about fundraising maybe for that particular venue. Trying to help out with that. But we've got a great conversation going on from there. But just concerns about the rumors that are out here that it's being torn down immediately, which I'm trying to tell everybody, but I talked to them, that's not the case. But, you know, there's a lot of things that have to happen before we get to any decision. So that's going to be the heads up. That conversation's been happening. There's been problems up here and there in the last couple of hours. Since the corner horse events, I've talked to two different people, different corridor events and phone calls. Just seems to be a rash right now, kind of re-circulating on that particular topic.
I received the same phone call and I was going to bring that up under commissioners, but they would like to work with the county in regards to getting some more fill into the arena so that they could use that. I think it'll be minimal cost and I think you looked into how much it was and you said it was minimal as well. I would have no problem getting that to where they can actually just use it for the next couple of years until the plan starts taking place.
They even offered us to help put it down as well too, with the agreement to the union agreement. The thing is, there's protocols that have to be followed. It's just a matter of coordination. So that's just going to give you heads up.
If I can add on it just a little bit, I think the last time we discussed this was last year sometime, and the problem wasn't getting the product or doing the work. It was at that time, just like what we're going through at Brush Creek right now, Mother Nature wouldn't cooperate with us. And it was constantly wet. There was a puddle there and if we tried to take the equipment on, it would sink. And unfortunately, it kind of just went away. So I don't see any problems or issues with doing this work.
Do you have time in your schedule to do something like that, to get that aggregate or whatever it is and dump it there?
That's what we have staffed.
Lay it out? Okay.
Going back to Brush Creek, I'm sure Mother Nature still isn't letting you take machines on it.
I talk with Jack every day. What do you think? What do you think? What do you think? And it's just.
Yeah. And Garrett, I'm sure you were going to touch base on this. I think you came to...
Yeah, I was just going to report that tomorrow at 2:00 PM, we're scheduled to meet with representatives of Norris Swickley and Marion Township out at Brush Creek. Myself, Dan and the sheriff will be there to meet with them. If any commissioners want to come out, it's 2:00 tomorrow, but judging by the rain, maybe bring your umbrella or by the weather forecast. So we'll report back how that goes tomorrow.
Any other questions for Dan or Tim? Tim, what's the set date for the pool to be open?
It's supposed to open Saturday of Memorial Day weekend. I think that's the 25th, if I remember correctly right. It's just having the assistant manager that I have, the local administrative manager, she goes to school in Florida, so she's leaving August 5th. So bringing her on only gets me to the end of July, basically. So there's a lot of little things that have to have a dance group needs to, I said PO's down to get signed so we can get chlorine because they can't start setting the pool up until we get chlorine. I don't want to spend the money if we're not going to open. It's one of those situations where I'm dancing so fine on line trying to get this going and just having the right people in place. It's not that we don't have guards who probably will do okay, but they're new, they're green. And you need to have some leadership and some responsibility being there on a daily basis. And that's when we get to the beginning of August. I don't want us to get into a situation where we take people's pool pass money and then say we can't be open in August. It's one of those situations, again, we're very careful how we tread with it.
You're seeing this issue across the county with other community pools as well?
Yes, I've been talking with other community, they're struggling to find guards for why. They're struggling with other community pools in regards to being open in August. Say anything like guards. It's not unique to us.
And I talked to you yesterday. We are holding, I believe Cindy, aren't we, holding his purchase orders for like all the chips and all of that stuff until we hear from you? And you said it should be at the end of the day today.
Versus 5 Friday morning at the latest.
Okay.
And my meetings at 5 and 6 o'clock tonight with the two staff people that I have that I'm talking to. So depending on how those meetings go tonight, I'll have a pretty good feel for what I did my, or my effort.
Do they, all of your lifeguards and everyone who are around children, do they have their clearances?
They will.
Okay. And did you want to, did you guys want to do that aggregate or whatever sand it is down at the horse arenas so that they can use it?
Yeah, as long as it can be done.
And I don't mean to interrupt again, Tim, but talking, you know, with the pool, it's probably going to take, once everything is approved and, you know, they decide if it's decided the pool is going to open, okay, it's probably going to take the DPW crew about two weeks.
Yeah, it takes time.
It'll take about two weeks. The pool's empty. You know, the pool has to be filled, chemicals, everything. Yeah, it'll take about two weeks to get it ready. So.
So the windows generally in regards to pulling it off and working it down like a seesaw is trying to get this.
Is it the holiday weekend that they, that you open? Is that the day?
That's Saturday, Sunday, Monday. And then we're during the week because of the staff being primarily school age, we will open from 4:00 to 7:00 at night until the 7th of June, when we'll go back to our 12 to 6 hours because there won't be anybody available to guard the pool because we're all going to school.
So let's talk about Plan B. What if it doesn't? What if this all doesn't come together?
It's not going to open. It's not going to be a safe, we won't be safe. I would cut, in your conscience, safely say we can operate that pool.
So then do you return the checks?
There's two right now.
Oh.
Yeah, so we're not, we haven't done any of that heavy stuff. But Nellie just probably hit the mailbox on Monday or Tuesday this week.
Okay.
Any other department head report?
Solicitor's report. An update regarding the issue with payroll and the IRS. I've been in contact with representatives of Connor Lamb's office and they needed us to fill out a form that would allow them to serve as a liaison between the IRS and the county. Sent that form over to their office earlier this week. So they're now going to be involved in assisting us with the penalties and taxes, or penalties and interest that we had on the IRS lien. Corey and payroll are still working through filling out the necessary paperwork that the IRS needs for those forms. So we're still sort of plugging through it and we'll keep you guys updated as things move forward. It's likely that we're not going to be able to do anything regarding the lien until we file the necessary paperwork. The IRS isn't going to consider waiving any type of penalty until we've complied with what they're actually looking for. So on that matter, is there any questions before I move on to the resolutions? On the resolution list, it's relatively light for tomorrow. So we'll point out a couple. Two and six still with the Recreation Department. Number two is an additional 5,000 copies of the calendar of events. Number six is the use of the softball fields up at Brady's Run Park. 13 and 14 are HR policies. Number 13 is a policy that promotes safety in dealing with minors whenever our employees interact with them. We felt it would be good with the lifeguards, with the ICE guards and other employees who deal with minors that have this policy in place. And then 14 is a policy that deals with any employee who is exposed to blood procedures on how to handle that and what to do. So those are the two HR policies that will be on the list of resolutions tomorrow. And then I will request an executive session to discuss the personnel matter.
Questions for the solicitor department?
Number two, Kepner Press. Are these already printed?
There are some, I don't know, is the additional 5,000 printed? No, they're not?
They're not. Okay. So you're waiting for the resolution to pass and then you, okay, very good. Number eight, in regards to a house in Alakupa that we're funding to be...
It's emergency housing.
Emergency housing. Who owns that house?
I believe it's that pair's Atkins, but we can check to make sure.
Okay. I'm not sure either. Okay. And the number 12, it says, playing park structures. This is playground equipment for a park in Alakupa. My question is if we have enough funding for that, maybe we could squeeze in another small playground for Brush Creek where we took the one out two years ago and calm some people down who use that park and...
Yeah, we can check. This is through a, with Housing and Urban Development, it's completely funded through them.
Yeah.
My guess is that this is specifically for this project, but I can check and see if there's other money that would be out there.
Okay. That's all I had.
You said executive session for personnel?
Correct.
Any other questions for the solicitors? Moving on to Board of Commissioners.
Just the Brighton Township meeting we had about the water management fees. Was it MS4s or whatever? Is the county able to assess fees as local municipalities?
For...
For the water that comes off of Brighton Township that goes into our system, goes into Brady's Run Creek, which goes into our sediment ponds, which goes into Hart Lake. I think we're doing that for them and yet they still want to charge us to do that. Most of the fee is coming from the park. But in essence, the park is doing that job for Brighton Township. So there should be some reciprocity one way or another on that. What's it cost whenever we have to clean out the sediment ponds?
It's approximately half a million dollars.
Oh, and you dredged it, Tony. Wasn't it three? Some two, three?
I don't remember. The thing I remember about it is we had to deal with the beavers, but it was quarter of a million dollars.
Huh? It was a quarter of a million dollars last time.
So do you see where I'm coming from in this? I mean, there has, there has to be a way, we have to have some kind of agreement. I don't think we should have to pay to do what we're already doing for them. They're saying that the fees are for what they're doing for us, but in essence, we're doing it on the part of properties, which is the biggest part of our fees.
The MS4 requirements are for the municipalities, not for the counties itself, but your point's well taken that essentially the vast majority of what the county is responsible and paying for that revolves around the Brady's Run property that the county owns and that we've been upkeeping and continue to upkeep to being in compliance with laws and regulations.
That night I couldn't sleep. That kept just driving me crazy. How can we be charged for something that we're doing, by them, for what we're doing for them?
Well, in that meeting, they weren't budging. I was hopeful that they would move a little. I mean, not even a little. They just flat said, that's, this is it. And I agree with you, Tony. I agree that wholeheartedly, that that in a sense, like I said in the meeting, is that they're taxing every citizen in Beaver County for that park. And that just isn't fair. I, they could have changed that from a fee to a tax and avoided this or was it the tax to the fee?
No, it's a fee.
It's a fee.
So it would have been a tax.
But if it taxed, they could have exempted us.
Correct.
So it was purposeful to have this go this way.
It was purposeful. They have, I believe they charged their residents $66 and effectively charged the county $10,000. And yesterday I spent a good amount of time looking through properties that are owned by Brighton Township that through the years have found their way onto the exempt from taxation list. And I, I think, I feel very confident that there's, we can reexamine some of those properties and may be able to pay the fee that they're asserting against us with some tax revenue from properties that might erroneously be on the exempt list. So.
The schools will be able to as well.
The schools will be able to as well. So let me finish taking a look at that and then I'll have that for your review.
We try to be good neighbors.
Yes.
And we explained that to them. We truly did. That's what this type of a move does when governments charge each other fees. So.
And it's $10,000 a year? Just a one-time fee.
Any else question?
That's it.
Commissioner Ewing?
I just wanted to go over the question, so we finished that. Tim, how did the history weekends go? The history weekend?
We had a great weekend. The reports we're getting back, the numbers are fairly well represented, so it's better than it's been the last few years.
Good.
Had great weather. So we haven't had a final report. We're probably going to report tomorrow from Brenda at the meeting. She, well, for what, those have reported back to her, so she's still gathering. Will be complete? I don't think so. It'll be a pretty good idea, but what I'm seeing on services, I'll just throw them.
And have you ever discussed with Beaver County Boom helping them with their weekend? Maybe having a band on the Friday night before the fireworks on Saturday?
I've talked to them about, you know, reaching out to us for ideas and again, it's not, like most people, we don't hear back from people. But I just talked to Nate actually yesterday and said, look, we need to, we want to be a major player with you guys. Just sit down and talk to us about where you're at. And I'm hoping I can get them to understand that.
Okay. Maybe I can help facilitate that and bring the group together to see if we could look at that because I know that we have a little bit of money in that hotel tax. And if we can draw people in over a weekend and they stay here, that benefits us all. So I was, you know, the, having a band on a Friday night and having fireworks like you can't see on this side of the Mississippi on one night. So I think that, you know, trying to get something moving like that would be beneficial.
I can hear. Well, we're happy to talk with anybody with those kind of ideas that can take the lead or work with them.
Thank you.
Yeah. I have three things. The first one is we received a letter from the district attorney about a vehicle that the Drug Task Force has taken over that they would like to give to the Department of Public Works. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
While we have you here. What, just, it's a van, right? It's a...
It's a pickup truck.
A pickup truck, I'm sorry. All right, yeah, it's a GMC pickup truck. What, where would you, is there any plans for that if we...
What happened was we had a 19, I believe, it was a 1986 Chevy S10 pickup truck that the courthouse crew used to run around.
So it's good.
It's 1986. It's done. It's, it's no longer roadworthy. So we took one of our trucks from our fleet down to Brady's Run and brought it here for them, one of the older ones. And this truck here would replace the one that we use actually, for lack of a better, we call it our garbage truck, you know, to throw our garbage bags and stuff in the park.
So this will stay in the park, this truck?
Yeah, it'll be stationed at DPW.
Have you had your mechanics look at it? I know it's at the site.
They're looking at it right now.
Okay. So you'll be, I mean, if it comes back, that's going to do a lot of work, you're not going to...
No, yeah, and that's with, you know, with the initial request for this, we actually looked at the vehicle before we even made the request and see if it was worth. It needs minor. It's very, you know, some breaks. I think there was a bracket for the gas tank and very, very minor. It's not going to, doesn't need a whole bunch.
Just keep us updated on your candidates.
Yes, sir.
The second thing is Doreen Mandetti at the elections is looking for storage. She would like the board to consider and give with planning. The room that they used down, is it the multi-purpose room? Is that what we call it? She said there's going to be a considerable amount of storage that needs to stay on site here with the new machines coming in. They have to be locked, locked and, you know, they show on the video camera there, as she does down at DPW. She did some exploring. Wayne, you're here. You have a back room that has some, maybe some space available. There's some maps, I think, from planning that are in that room. I don't know how many. She said there's a bunch of empty boxes. Well, she hasn't looked through it because it's not her stuff. But she wants to see if the board will reach out to planning and the elections to facilitate potentially moving some things around.
Those are historical maps and so I don't know where they would put those because those are the big, like, maps that they, the little drawers slide.
Yeah, Wayne has some...
You have an idea?
I have room.
He has a room in the back room. It's probably what, 20 by 20. But it's just a matter of logistical maneuvering and, so I'm just going to send an email out this afternoon to Lance and Doreen to see if they can get together. But I just want to keep the board up on that.
They'll definitely need help with your guys to get this because those are way...
Guys love doing that kind of stuff.
They're probably on those, right? And the third thing I have is the sheriff, K-9. We said that we would discuss it at this meeting. It's been two weeks. The sheriff did provide the two questions, the two answers to the question I had about cashing the check. I checked with Mike Bromine today. The check was essentially cashed because it was sent to the Humane Society, made out to the Humane Society, then the Humane Society makes it out to the county or wherever it needs to go. But the money could always be returned was the first answer. And the second answer was if the county government would ultimately eliminate the K-9 in future or this year, what will we do with the remaining money? And that would be given back to, given back to the foundation. I've reached out to the foundation to see if it'd be possible to allot this money to another municipality. I think they have their own process of doing that. It'd probably benefit to the county to give it back to the foundation and they do what they need with it. I've been thinking greatly about this and one of the things that I asked the law department was, at the end of the day, can we tell a elected official what to do in their office if they have the money in their budget? And I think the answer is no. Is that correct?
Yes.
So if the sheriff had, I don't want to say this $10,000, but if he had the operation, I think they, they said to us whoever the deputy would be to maintain a dog would receive an extra $3,650 a year. Or is it every day or is it just their working days that they receive a $10 stipend?
No, it's $10 a day.
So extra $34,000 plus whatever it costs to maintain the dog. If he has it in his budget, ultimately, we can't stop him from bringing another K-9 in, or can we?
In my opinion, this relates along the lines of a personnel within his department. The dog is a K-9 officer. It would be up to the sheriff to determine how he wants to staff his officer. The question for you guys would be, does this fit within his budget? And I think that's where he comes into play regarding the commissioners. The way it is currently, the, my understanding is the current agreement that they have with the Roethlisberger Foundation would cover all the costs and expenses for the 2019 year. And then moving forward, it would be a determination whether there would be money that would need to come from the county or ultimately fundraising or another grant to supply for the dog at that time.
Sheriff, if you didn't receive the, sheriff is here, if you didn't receive the K-9 grant, do you have money in your budget to cover this?
Yeah.
And what's the, what is the cost? I mean, I know what the $10 stipend a day is for one person, but what is, I know the gentleman here a couple of weeks ago answered that it's roughly $1,000 a year?
Correct. And that's true in that area, basically. And again, some of that Roethlisberger money will go towards equipment and equipment for training and for maintaining the dog, equipment for the vehicle, equipment for cats in our, in our office.
Any commissioners have anything to add?
I said this back in 2016. I am all for K-9s and being at the municipal level, I think that that's where they belong. I think that that's where they're most, they're utilized. Back in 2016, Sheriff, I do believe that your budget was a little over $3 million. Now it's a little closer to $4 million. I think that we're going outside the scope of what we're here to do. Although, you know, we want to keep everybody safe, there is a limit to the income. And you approached us probably two months ago because you didn't have it in your budget for the TASER. We got the TASERS and I feel that it's just one more thing that is, is coming up that is, that the municipality should have the K-9s. And that's where I stand.
So I was for the TASERS because the TASERS protect the officers.
I am too.
And I'm for the dog for the same reason.
One of the things I could just touch base on is about municipalities for municipalities who don't have them at the chiefs of police meeting that I kind of held around. And one of the things I did learn is that in municipality, there's not always a mutual, there's a mutual agreement to assist other municipalities, but there always isn't. In case, for an example, if, I'm going to use a municipality that doesn't have a dog, if Rochester had a dog and their K-9 officer was on duty from 7:00 to 3:00 and they needed assistance in New Brighton who doesn't have a dog, Rochester would not send their dog there because that would be taking a police officer off their street. This was what my understanding is. Now, if there's a disaster or something, a large something, so even though municipalities, some of them have them, they don't always assist their other municipalities.
And sometimes that's by contract. So they have minimum staffing in some municipalities. So if an officer has to leave the boundaries of their municipality, they have to call somebody if they're going to be on overtime. So a lot of times they renege on that or block it, assisting.
So for this check, since I guess we necessarily don't have the money to fund a K-9 right now, but who would accept this check to fund it for the year of 2019?
It would go to the sheriff's department.
And the sheriff's department would deposit it as they would deposit any other... And the sheriff's department would deposit it as they would deposit any other checks coming into their office and then they would put it in their budget.
Sheriff, I'm sorry. The K-9 that is proposed for us to buy?
It would be leased.
Or leased? Is it for sale or lease?
Absolutely.
For another community?
It goes with the handler.
It goes with the handler.
It goes with the handler.
Says no...
These dogs, they're not independent operators.
No, I'm looking at the proposed contract between you and the officer, and it says, "No outside contracting work will be permitted."
Correct. Absolutely.
So we put that in there. So we have the exclusive right that sheriff's department...
Absolutely.
Okay. And there's a thirty-day out clause.
Yes.
Say that again?
There's a thirty-day out clause.
No, about the...
No outside contracting work will be permitted that would allow the owner to profit from Rookie while this lease is in effect.
Okay.
I mean, that's important. That's really important.
Yeah, what that basically saying is while this lease is in play, he can't go do work on the side and get paid for that work, for the K-9's work. So if a summit were to come to Pittsburgh, they'd have to contract through the sheriff's department to have that K-9. He can't go up and...
Yeah, the handler can't independently use that dog for other services.
So I think what we're getting at, Garrett, is we can't...because it's a personnel issue ultimately, at the end of the day, we can't say, "No, we don't want this" if the money...if he has, physically has the money.
K-9 would be a...would be an officer of the sheriff's department, right? So if there's money in there, then ultimately, that's the sheriff's discretion on how to staff his office.
Then why are we discussing it?
I think he brought it to you guys just sort of as a courtesy, I think, is ultimately.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure we had an agreement. The issue, the issue three years ago was, yeah, three years ago was that there was not an agreement with the county to bring this dog on. I do think it's appropriate that the county has some...has some say in this and has some binding and has some agreement with this, so. And that's why we brought that. That's what I was asked to do at that time. We've been working on it ever since, so that's where we're at. And again, it's actually the email that I sent. Perfectly willing to work, whether it's a lease, whether it's a sale, whatever agreement the county thinks is appropriate.
Well, I...Sheriff, I think that's all...that's nice that you wanna include us. I wish you would've concluded us before you put the application in. It's a little bit late in the game to be bringing us in when you already have the money and deposited. It's almost like we'll ask for forgiveness rather than permission.
Well, I see it that way. Again, I could've bypassed this route. Talked about being good neighbors. I'm just trying to be a good neighbor here.
Any other questions? So I'm gonna refer any questions about the K-9. I'm gonna defer them to the sheriff and all the board of commissioners. And I would need executive session for one personnel issue, please. Go to other businesses. Hearing any other business? Audience participation.
Who was sending the check?
Defer anything to do with the K-9, Mr. Sheriff. Sir.
Yeah, I basically...I'm careful what we're talking about at the beginning as far as with the horse arena. I just wanted to try to find out what was going on, what the plans in the future were for it. And I mean, actually, the more I thought about it, that's the gentleman that I need to be sitting down with back there. But...
Can you please state your names as we put in the minutes?
I'm sorry. My name is Steve Decuta.
Thank you.
And because with Bradyland Park, there could be so much more brought to Beaver County if we did it a little differently. Number one, because of the conditions, the horse arena is why there hasn't been any shows there. If we did fix it, that would bring shows there. That would bring a lot more traffic to Bradyland Park. And there's also a couple of other things that if we did it, it would bring a ton of people to Bradyland Park as far as the horse people. For instance, it'd be low cost, like a couple of tie lines, even like a fence post outside one of the latrines. If we made it horse rider friendly and to make it easier for people to tie up and take care of the horses down there, there would be a ton of people there. And I'm kinda using this as an example, but I'm in RV business and they...I tried to get where I work to sell horse trailers. And they said, "There's no market for me here. There's no horse people here." Well, the following weekend after I started there, I was down Beaver Creek on Memorial Day weekend, and there was not an inch of space left in that place. There's a ton of horse people around here, and there's a ton of...really, there is a lot of horse people that ride Bradyland Park now. There is. I'm down there all the time and I see them. But if we did something like that, put a couple of...some tie lines out, some maybe a couple of stalls, you know, where people just put the horses for a few minutes, and that's not a high-cost items. That would bring a ton of people here. And we've even talked about this a couple of times. Like, I know we have the opening day of trout season with this camping down there. And if we did something like that for the horse world, too, that place would be packed. And one thing I can guarantee you with the horse people, the park would not be trashed after the weekend.
Good point.
Because they do take care of themselves and they take care of what's around them. I guarantee that. As far as the horse arena and like for the tie lines, I've had a ton of people say they will do fundraisers. We'll find ways to help come up with the money to do it. They want this, and they're willing to help do whatever it takes to do it, even, you know, throw money in to get this done. And I think if we did fundraisers down there, we could probably cover most of the cost to do the little things that we want done down there. But that would bring a lot of people down to that park. That's guaranteed. But yeah, we'll talk more about that and see what we can do to get things going. But my concern, which is why I was here, is I don't know what the future...if there are plans for it right now, because there's rumors everywhere. They're scrapping the horse arena. They're tearing it down. They're doing this. Everybody's hearing a lot of things, but nobody knows any facts. And that's why I decided to get involved and see what I could find out and kinda be a voice for the horse people and see what I could put in place to get things going. But yeah, I'd love to sit down with ten more and see what we can find out and work something out here.
So the facts are, there is a comprehensive plan for all of our parks. That arena is in our comprehensive plan. It is going to be considered for a...to expand the recycling center and to have a playground for children with disabilities and adults with disabilities. Right now, that is not even on the table that we're discussing. So for the foreseeable future that I see, that's not going to happen right away. So I would say you have years. So that's what the facts are, and then we'll go from there, so.
And I think with yourself getting involved and getting other people involved, if we see the interest, I think you think outside the box, our park's a pretty big park. There could be another place for a horse arena to go up somewhere. And at the end of the park, by the dog park, it's a large field area. So it's not necessarily that when it's taken away, it's gone forever.
That's where the silt from the layups that we spent 2.1 million dollars to help Brighton Township filter their water.
Nice.
That's where that nice big paint came from.
So I think whenever this plan does come to fruition, that as long as we think outside the box, we could find somewhere for the horses to be able to come, stay, and maintain and have, I guess, another horse park. And it's a big area there.
May I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
I'm not a horse person, but I... I might look like a horse, but... I certainly wanna do whatever we can to help everyone out, whatever the commissioners direct me to do. What type of field goes in a horse arena? It's obviously not topsoil or...
Let me find out, because I don't open my mouth and put the wrong stuff in there.
Okay.
But I do know a lot of horse people that are involved with shows and that knows what it is. So I'll get the correct information, and if you have a card or something, I'd be glad to let you know.
It's not loom or lube or whatever.
No, I don't.
It's a mix of different ingredients. Sand's part of it.
Sand's part of it.
Yeah, it's a little more solid.
Thank you.
I too came to speak for the horse people. My name's Gail Cunningham, and I'm one of the people who called Tim. He can attest that I do have a horse because she was whinnying in my ear while we were talking on the phone. Why she chose then, I don't know. I came to find out what the plan was. I've looked at the site plan, the big site plan. I've read through it at least a couple of times, still reading through it. And I think there are some really good things in it, but I would like the horse women and men to be involved in decisions going forward. I understand that input was solicited, but I never heard anything about, you know, public comment. I missed that. I have a feeling a lot of horse people did. So I think there are over 900 people on the Facebook site for Brady's Run Horsemen's Club. So there are a number of people in the community that have an interest in this. And I think that we want to work with the park to make the maximum best use of the property, share it. You know, I have no problem with sharing the trails with bicycles. You know, it's not a problem for me. And I just...I just wanna make sure that that portion of the public has an input going forward. And I appreciate him talking to me. He was very informative and very helpful. And I saw on the Facebook page that rumors were swirling around, and I kinda inserted myself and said, "I wanna find out what the facts are. I wanna be a positive influence going forward." You know, not trade on rumors, but let's get the facts. Let's start a dialogue. Let's be part of the improvement going forward, so. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer.
Well, and like you said, the little things, they're not expensive, like a tie-off. I get that. That's not something that is a picnic table here and there. I know...I was a four-H girl. I showed in that ring and up in Hookstown. So I know the little things mean a lot. And so I wouldn't wanna see a ring, an arena, just disappear. So I think working with all of us to help get what you need is gonna happen. As you can see, we're all very amenable to having that done, helping.
Okay. I'll be able to give you a better idea probably within the next three weeks on what kind of support we have, because one thing that me and my wife were talking about last night is, one thing I'm gonna do is I'm gonna rent a gazebo down Bradyland Park for a night. And because it...just, is it available at night? That's probably a good question.
You mean a pavilion?
A pavilion. Yeah, I'm sorry, pavilion.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yes, short answer.
Okay.
Yeah, but really, to see how much support I can get.
Okay.
And is if I do it at night when most people are off, I think the place is gonna be packed.
Okay.
I know a lot of people that wanted to be here today, but most people weren't. Unfortunately, I was...I had the ability to be able to switch my day off around so I can be here. And I would love to see that taken care as far as the horse arena. And like you said, there might even be better places in that park for where we could set up stalls in a horse arena.
That's very true.
And, you know, that place down the other end down there, that might even be better because it's less traffic down there. So as far as that goes, that might even be a better position for the horses.
Yeah.
And there's still easy access to all the trails from that. I ride it all the time. But I'm not originally a horse person myself. My wife got me involved in it, because I figured if I wanted to see my wife again, I should get a horse. And I'm from Boston. The only horse that I share is a state trooper sitting on it.
Yeah.
So, but it's a great world, and I love the...I love the fact that the horses have...when we ride through the park down that end where the dogs are, kids love them.
They do.
I cannot ride through that area without kids saying, "Can I pet him? Can I pet him?" And so, I mean, it's a great environment, and I think it would be great for Beaver County. I think it'd be great for that park if we did progress on that area, but I'm gonna rent a gazebo, pavilion down there for a night, and so I'll let you know how it goes as far as the support goes. But I got a feeling we're gonna be all the way.
If you'd let our office know, I would like to see that.
Well, we have a Facebook page called...
Yes, I know. I'm a member of it. I follow it. I don't engage because I didn't wanna go back and forth. I...
Right. Yeah. You don't get going on there.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I'll be posting it on there to keep it up. I started that page myself.
Okay.
And so I'll be updating that page. So if you wanna just keep an eye on that page, you'll be updated constantly. Because I did decide, me and my wife both decided we are gonna step in, we are gonna take control and see what we can do to help out and get things done. And she mentioned the bikers up there. One thing I could tell you, if anybody has a problem with the bikers, tell them to come talk to me, because some of the horse people that I've talked to, we had problems with them because they get in the way or whatever. The bikers up there are awesome. They are the ones that take care of those trails 85% of the time. So the bikers that go in that park, they have 100% respect for me and most of the people that I know that have horses down there, so.
Thanks for the feedback.
Yeah, they're great people. They do a lot of work there. They do it on their own, their own initiative. But most of the horse people that I've talked to understand this, and they give them all the leeway that they need. But I appreciate you hearing me out today, and I'm excited to see what goes on going forward.
Thank you. Any other audience participation? Hearing none? Any reason to reconvene after executive session?
No.
Moving to executive session, not reconvene?